Going to call the order this commission meeting of the city of St. Pete Beach. Today is Monday, September 8th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening is going to comprise of two different meetings. The first one is going to be our annual budget, the first of our two annual budget meetings. After that meeting is adjourned, we're going to move on to a regular agenda. And so with that, we will start with the budget meeting and ask if there are any amendments to the agenda for the budget.
Mayor, I do need to call roll.
Thanks for that.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Here.
Commissioner Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Here.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Petrella?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the budget meeting? City manager, you had mentioned the sheriff's contract. That's after we conclude the budget meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no amendments, is there a motion, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
If I could read the title.
Oh, sorry.
I'll do the title real quick. An ordinance of the city of St. Pete Beach, Florida.
I'm sorry, we're not, we're not that far.
The agenda, the agenda.
We're just at the agenda.
What?
We're at the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are running on 100% all cylinders today.
It's one of those days.
This is why we don't have commission meetings on Mondays.
Yeah. All right, so I'll move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
City clerk, if you'll please do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrella?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. City clerk, are there any general audience comments?
There are no general audience comments.
Okay, with that, we move to the first item, ordinance 3A, first reading of ordinance 2025-18.
An ordinance of the city of St. Pete Beach, Florida, establishing the millage rate for fiscal year 2026, beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, providing and announcing the name of the taxing authority, the rolled back millage rate, the percentage increase over the rolled back millage rate, and the millage rate to be levied, provided for reading in its entirety and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Devin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. I'm Devin Schmidt, our finance director for the city of St. Pete Beach. So first off, we just have the first reading of ordinance 2025 for our millage rate for fiscal year 2026. As the commission is aware, the city of St. Pete Beach is required to formally adopt its millage rate for the fiscal year 2026 in compliance with Florida state statute. The ordinance proposes a millage rate of 3.0913 mils per 1,000 of taxable value for fiscal year 2026. The millage rate is point eight 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 nine percent lower than the rolled back rate of 3.1189 or $140,000 approximately in ad valorem value. As the commission is aware, this was a deliberate decision of the commission to keep the millage rate the same for 2026 in order to help ease the financial burden after the storms for the residents. So with that, this is the changes of millage per year. So this does include city, county, school, EMS, and other districts from 2020 to 2025, and those changes in the millages. So just showing kind of a quick calculation of how we get to that revenue and how that translates for our budget. You can see the taxable value there, our millage rate, with our ad valorem subtracting out that 70% for the 4% discount rate, and that's how we're arriving at the $15.1 million for the millage. And so with that, just have an action request for the commission to consider.
Thank you, Devin. Commissioners, comments, questions? Are there any audience comments?
There are no audience comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Devin. Commissioners, is there a motion?
I motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-18, establishing the millage rate for fiscal year 2026.
Second?
Do we need to mention the actual millage rate? Since we can't adjust it up down or?
We can, let's go back and grab it. Is 3.0913 mils.
How many motions?
Please.
I go, I motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-18, establishing the millage rate of 3.093 mils.
913.
Sorry, 913 mils for the fiscal year of 2026.
Second?
City clerk, if you please do a roll call.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrella?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have item 3B, first reading of ordinance 2025-19, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026.
An ordinance of the city of St. Pete Beach, Florida, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026, beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, providing for the incorporation of the adopted capital budget as the capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan, providing for reading in its entirety and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. For the record, Devin Schmidt, still the finance director for the city of St. Pete Beach. So before you, we have the ordinance 2025, which is adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026. As the commission is aware, we worked through the budget through five separate budget workshops, which also includes the Finance Budget Review Committee. So all of these items have been presented before you and brought back on different occasions throughout the workshops. For our budget summary, the commission can see that for our total governmental funds, we're looking at $67.2 million in revenues and $86.7 million in expenditures. For proprietary funds, we are recommending for $23.3 million in our total revenues in all enterprise funds and $36 million in expenditures for our enterprise funds. So looking at this business impact estimate, so for 2026 as presented, we are looking at including revenues and transfers in for the entire city totaling $90,609,137. This is for all funding uses, including expenditures and transfers out. And for our expenditures, we're looking at $122,829,040. The difference of the revenues and expenditures is $32,219,903, and that represents our existing fund balance for one-time capital projects. For our funded positions by department, you can see here that we're requesting 159.6 full-time equivalents of personnel. Forty-four of those is within our fire and EMS. So that's our largest department with personnel, followed by our public services department. Looking at our capital improvement plan, the summary of changes in capital projects. So the budget is a living and breathing document that can be approved and updated by the commission. So since our last workshop, number five, I just wanted to call out a couple items or a couple of capital projects that we're requesting reappropriation for into 2026. So we have the community center seawall replacement, the watershed management plan, the 36th Avenue seawall replacement, Mary Peere bait shack rebuild, the Don Cesar baffle structures and Don Cesar outfall improvements, Passageway tide check valve replacements, four-wheel drive trucks within our building fund, and the City Hall AV reappropriation project. Looking at our total capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2026, we have $134,000 in our general fund capital. We have $195,000 in our building fund, excuse me, 5.7 million in our resiliency fund and projects. And then in our capital improvement fund, we're looking at $31.2 million. For our fleet fund, we're requesting just over $1 million. In our wastewater fund, we are looking at 15.5 million, reclaimed water 700,000, and storm water 3.8 million, and in parking 300,000, for a total of $58.7 million in capital improvement projects. And with that, I do have a requested motion.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Do we have any general audience comments?
There are no audience comments.
Okay. Commissioners, just to make sure that the public understands, we've gone over this at multiple times now. So the last meeting was about an hour and a half. And so the reason we may not have any questions tonight about $123 million budget is not because we don't have any questions, it's because we've already gone through all the iterations of the budget. So with that, is there a motion?
I motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-19, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026.
I second.
City clerk, if you'll please do a roll call.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrella?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think it was only appropriate that Commissioner Riznicki, you motioned that last item concerning how many years you have fought for all the different items that were in that budget, particularly for the Don Cesar neighborhood and that area in Belveste, the tide check valve, the sea valves, the baffle boxes, storm water. So it's, it's good to see. It's good to see a lot of those items come in. And I think that's just come from, from having a staff that's taking the commission and saying, here's, we've given you what the priorities are because our residents told us what the priorities are. And I'd, I'd just love to see that you're already getting to the point of executing those. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I also add that, and to thank the staff, because it's not just this budget process. There was years of workshops now led by Camden as well and, and the whole team. I mean, I don't know how many meetings we've had. And now, starting with Belveste as well, and Foca, Yega, and Lido, and just all of them. And I know the city overall has the same experiences, but it was a lot of years of work. So thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Next, we have action item 4A, resolution 2025-20, establish rate of stormwater service assessment.
All right, last one for me. Devin Schmidt, finance director, city of St. Pete Beach. This is a resolution to establish the rate of stormwater service assessments. And so the city annually imposes non-ad valorem property assessments for the operation and maintenance of our city's stormwater infrastructure. The assessments are included as a component of residents' property tax bills and as an annual requirement for imposing the assessments. And those are similar to our millage rate and the budget adoption process. So the assessment structure includes two billing tiers. So our tier one is assessed on a per parcel basis and imposed to fund the program costs associated with our city's stormwater system. The second tier is assessed based upon the impervious surface area with higher costs imposed on properties with physical characteristics that place a greater burden on the stormwater drainage system. So the equivalent residential unit, or ERU, for tier two is 3,813 square feet, based on a typical impervious surface area of a single-family parcel. So what we're proposing for this resolution, beginning fiscal year October 1, 2025, is no changes are proposed in the existing tiers for this fiscal year. So our tier one is a per-tax parcel at $64.32, and tier two is variable per ERU at $119.43. And with that, I have an action request.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Do we have any audience comments?
There are no audience comments.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-20, establishing rate of stormwater service assessments.
I second.
Thank you. City clerk, if you'll please do a roll call.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrella?
Yes.
The motion carries.
With that, our budget meeting is adjourned, and we are moving to the regularly scheduled commission meeting. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda as proposed? I would request first that we move the discussion on the sheriff's contract to the first item ahead of audience comments.
I have a couple of discussion items.
Okay.
My first one is going to be CUP administration. And the second one would be mix on SB 180.
And then, Mayor, I'd have a discussion item to add as well regarding if, if we need to look at any changes to our setbacks based on new construction of elevated houses.
Okay. Are there any other amendments? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
City clerk, if you please do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Mayor Petrella?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. With that, the first item for this evening, it is action item 4A, to authorize the city manager to execute the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office in a local agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Adam Poyer, Assistant City Manager here at the city of St. Pete Beach. Tonight, what you have in front of you is the inter-local agreement renewal with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, our annual renewal. Just to give you a couple of quick background information on this agreement, it's under the Florida Interlocal Cooperation Act, which we entered into agreement with Pinellas County Sheriff's back in fiscal year 13, when we moved from our own police department to the sheriff's office. That contract was just over $2 million. What I'll tell you about that is the staffing levels have kind of gone up and down since that point. We have increased the staffing levels. We've added two deputies, we've added sergeants. And so one of the biggest drivers of the cost increases is the personnel that we add. Because every time we add personnel, it adds equipment, things of that nature. And of course, the, the employment costs per, per deputy have gone up significantly since, since 2013, like all of employment costs. So that's kind of the driver of the increase. But what this contract does for us, it provides a highly quality law enforcement services to our residents and to our visitors. And this partnership approach with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office ensures fiscal responsibility and law enforcement efficiency. So these are going to be the current staffing levels. And we did make some changes, which I'll capture in the next couple of slides. But this year, we have 10 patrol deputies, four sergeants, two community policing deputies. Part of the contract also is that we have access to all the other resources that the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office offers, and that's detectives, the public safety communicators, which are the 911 dispatchers, and then, of course, the school crossing guards that you see on Blind Pass Road. Additionally, we get all the common law enforcement aspects of routine patrols, marine patrols, and then, of course, beach enforcement. So some of those key adjustments that we made, and, and what I'll say about this is, similar to all parts of the budget, when we sharpened our pencil and we started looking at the, the sheriff's contract, we looked at ways where we could come within the budget numbers of what we had in the previous years. So what we decided to do was reduce, and we did mention this to you all during the budget process, obviously, but we did reduce the community policing deputies from three back to two. That had been the normal. We, we started with one, we went to two. Recently, about two years ago, we went to three. We did look at the other municipalities that surround us, and this does put us in line with, with those other communities. For example, Madeira Beach has two community policing deputies. So that was one cost-saving reduction. And then the secondary employment that you see there, that's when we asked for additional deputies, be it beach patrol or things of that nature. We were maxed out at $250,000. We did lower that to $150,000, and we did that based on actual use. So we looked at how much we'd been spending over the term of the, of the contracts, and we felt like the 150 number was, was the right amount. So that's why we, we, we reduced that. So those are the two major changes. One of the other things that we did in our contract was, we did notice when we reviewed the contract that we didn't specifically spell out what our expectations were of the two community policing officers. We did see that in other contracts. Having spoke to the sheriff and, and his staff, we know that they kind of defined what all those people did. So they, they were doing what we were expecting, but we did just add it to the contract just to, just to clean it up. So it wasn't that it wasn't happening, it just wasn't in the contract. So when you look at the overview of the financial costs of this, the total cost is just over 3.5 million with a monthly payment of just under 300,000. The cost increase from the current year to this year is just 0.05%, so just over $1,800. Prior to us making those two cost adjustments that, that I spoke of, we were at 3.7 million, which was a 7% increase. So those two cost-saving measures that we put in place today was, the $100,000 we reduced in off-duty, and then reducing that one community policing deputy save 147,000, just over 147,000. And then finally, the contract administration, basically, it's a year contract. It's, it's standard language, where either party can cancel within 90 days. And if we don't, if we don't renew the contract like we're doing tonight, it would automatically update for an additional 120 days. So just in summary, what this contract does for us and our community and the citizens that, that we serve is it maintains a strong law enforcement partnership. Again, we did make some adjustments for some fiscal responsibility, but ultimately, this still continues to ensure community safety. And with that, Sheriff Gutierrez is here to, to address you all, and I'm going to let him come up now, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Jeff. Evening, everybody. Pleasure to be here. They asked me to come down and just talk to you. Happy to answer any questions you want. We're happy to be here in St. Pete Beach. And one of the things that, you talked about the, you know, first year of the contract. But I was here then. I'm in my 15th year in office now, so I was here in 2013 when we took over down here. The cost savings the first year was 4.5 million to the city. So it was a big savings, it was huge. And one of the things I think that we bring, hopefully many things we bring to the city, but economies of scale, effective services at a very, very reasonable cost. And as we're talking about, and I had met with the city manager a few weeks ago, and we talked about this, when you want to reduce a community policing deputy, you want to adjust the amount that you're spending in off-duty, et cetera. But by contracting with us, we can provide that flexibility. You can go up and down, you can make those changes, you can be nimble. And one of the things that was a driver in the cost savings when St. Pete Beach had its own police department, and I'll just analogize it this way, maybe it's not a good analogy, but I'll use it anyway, is think about Publix on the day before Thanksgiving. And you walk into Publix, and they got, you know, 15 cash register lanes, and they're all open and staffed. But that's what the old St. Pete Beach Police Department had to do, because you had to be staffed for peak times because they were self-contained. They didn't have any other resources. So they had to be staffed for spring, spring break and all the community events and everything you have. You don't need that all the time, just like Publix doesn't have to have all 15 cash register lanes open in the middle of June. So with us, is, is that that's where we came up with a staffing model, where we have the deputies that are assigned here, but we can surge staff for you. And that's one of the benefits of having that secondary employment model, and it's worked. And in fact, you know, we've talked about some other cities using that. Dunedin uses that, and some of the others do. So I think that's one of the things that provides you with maximum flexibility. St. Pete Beach is a safe community, that's what you want. You know, obviously tourism is a big driver, as it is throughout the county and throughout the state. We want people to be safe and feel safe, and they are here in St. Pete Beach. You know, we often get concerns about some of the things, quality of life issues, and people out on the beach doing things they shouldn't. And that's why we have the beach patrols, and we're out there and try and be fair and equitable. But we're willing to, you know, take the enforcement action where we need to. So if there's any questions that you all have, anything you wanted to talk about, I'm happy to address anything that you want to talk about.
Thank you. Commissioners, Nicky?
Hi, I have a couple of questions, or maybe just comments, not that I need an answer right this moment. I'm representative for District 3, which is basically the Don Cesar, Belveste, Lido. And some of the things, you know, the, the community policing, it has always been a big topic in a lot of the association meetings that I've been to. And working in many different organizations, the thing that always breaks apart is communication, right? How, how community officers know what the community expects, whether it's ordinances, you know, and I'll give you some comments that they say. "I see them drive by, but they don't even, they didn't even see that's an ordinance," you know, like, "Why is that car parked there? It's not supposed to be there." Or, "I haven't seen them drive by here in forever." And by the way, I'll add a comment, because I actually said this to the city manager today. Whatever you've been doing in the last couple of months, maybe, I don't know if you implemented something, but I hadn't seen the sheriff patrol the neighborhood in quite some time. It felt like no one was ever driving around. And then, all of a sudden, I'm like, "Gosh, there they go by again." And so, I was like, "What's going on? Is there something happening?" Or, you know. So, but it felt good, because it reminded me back when we did have our own officers, you know, our police department, St. Pete Beach. So, I always felt the presence. They always lowered the window. They always said, "Hey, how are you doing?" You know, and it wasn't because I was a commissioner. I was, you know, they didn't know who I was, but I always felt like they were a part of the community. A lot of our meetings in the neighborhood always involved a community police officer coming to the meeting, so that way, the residents could talk to the officer, what's going on, what are they seeing, and so forth. It provided a sort of a connection, you know, to the neighborhoods. And every neighborhood, you know, here that we're representing is a little bit different in where they're located and what they're seeing. You know, the larger resort districts or the business areas might be different than the Don Cesar, let's just say. But anyways, one of the, you know, what I would like for you to thank, you don't have to answer, is improving that relationship, that people feel that, because it does make you feel safe, but also heard, you know, that we have this issue that's always happening, whether, you know, we've had car thefts in the neighborhood in the Don Cesar. We've had people walking onto people's docks in the middle of the night, whether it's loud noises, you know, people sleeping underneath the bridge by the bayway, you know. A lot of little things that makes people not feel safe that they've communicated to me, but we don't know how to bring that back, you know, other than obviously to the city manager, but being heard, or maybe having opportunities with that community officer to come to a meeting and speak. So, that's what I wanted to bring up.
Well, I think that it's no question, it's important that people are safe, but they have to feel safe. And they are two different things, but they lead you to the same place. You know, I know that the community policing deputies, you have two down here, you know, as we talked about, you all made a decision this year or two for the upcoming budget year to decrease by one. And that was largely, the deputy was out there on the beaches, but you are well-staffed here. You have primarily, on most shifts, you have two deputies plus a sergeant plus the community policing deputies, and then, we have kind of an overlap shift that goes into the evening hours. You know, it does get busy sometimes. You have traffic crashes. You have other things. It's, you know, it's not a huge city, but it's big. You've got all the way from Treasure Island all the way down. So, I would say it probably does vary in the amount of presence that you see, but I know the deputies are out there in the community. I know that they're trying to be present and be seen. We'll continue to try and beef up that effort and make sure that they are in the neighborhoods, especially down. This is something that's come up forever about that presence in the south end of the city. So, we'll make sure that, you know, we try and continue, continue to try and make an effort to do that. You know, as far as, you know, the crime and thefts and all is that, you know, one's too many. But overall, for a city this size, and we track the stats and crime stats, we look at it all the time, but we really measure it, because you want to look at it over a period of time, and we look at it on an annual basis and a semi-annual basis. So, when you look at like thefts in St. Pete Beach for the first six months of this year compared to the first six months of last year, so this would be January to July, and this is really a low number. In the city of St. Pete Beach, and this would include, now, it's not open now, but Publix, I mean, all the retail businesses, I mean, everything for the whole city. This is people getting wallets taken while on the beach or whatever. You had a total of 48 theft incidents. And that's down 23% from last year, where there were 63. Those are very low numbers. And, you know, for those 48 victims, they're still victims, of course. Like I said, I get it, but those are very low numbers. Overall, all of the crime in St. Pete Beach was, for that period of time, down about 26% total. So, you know, again, it is safe, and that's what you want, because people need to feel, but we'll work on that. Sometimes, too, I'll just say, and I shared these numbers, and I don't know, I think the city manager may have shared this with you, a lot of the times, we get complaints, and it's all over, but a lot of it down the south, about ordinances, you know, like you just mentioned. And so, and this has been ongoing down here since 2013, and I've addressed it many times, you know, with this. But think about this, because, so we are out here, and we are enforcing the ordinances, and we are going to enforce them. But it's also, you know, about being fair and about doing the right thing by people, and I always look at things as that put myself or put ourselves in the position of the citizens. And what's really important is that people know what the rules are, and they be given a chance to adhere to those rules, and if they don't, and then they know the consequences, and that's a decision they make. So, no enforcement should be a gotcha. It should be fair. And so, we spent, and again, this is from July of 2024 through July 1 of 2025, so a whole year. And you want to measure things over a period of time. You don't want to measure them in little stuff, but you want to look at it over time. So, over that year period documented, deputies spent 1,855 hours working details that were directed patrols in St. Pete Beach, looking for ordinance violations. So, that's a pretty fair amount of time that they spent. And out of that almost 1,900 hours of time, there were a total of 55 citations and a total of 1,300 warnings issued. So, you say, "Okay, well, you gave a lot of warnings." But here's the reason why we give a warning, because it's fair and it works. If it doesn't work, then we'll have no problem in citing people. But here, think about this, is that out of the 1,288 people, so of those citations and warnings, there were 1,288 subject to receive a citation or warning, and a total of 16 repeat offenders. So, every time that we come in contact with somebody, whether it's a dog on the beach, or somebody not with a leash, or any of the other ordinance violations, is that we document them in a system. So, that way, the next time a deputy encounters that person, we can look and see, is this your first rodeo or not? You know, if we have warned you before, and you're doing it again, well, it's time to pay up. You didn't get the message. So, we are documenting all of those contacts. We put them in the system, and what we found is that there were only 16 repeat offenders. So, when people see, "Oh, they're not doing this, and they're not doing that, and all these people keep doing the same things," it's really not the same people doing it again, and we are addressing it. So, for the public, know that we are out there. We do care about the ordinances. We do care about enforcement, and we are doing it. But I think we're doing it in a fair and an equitable way, because if we were to give every single one of those people, every time that they took their dog to the beach, and they didn't know, and we were giving citations opposed to warnings, what are we accomplishing, you know, other than being heavy-handed with people? And we don't want to do that.
Commissioner Robinson?
I was glad to hear you said statistically that we were down 26%. Only, I say that because I've gotten an uptick in my crime alerts, especially from 55th to 75th for both petty and violent crimes. So, I was happy to hear the statistics have gone down. Maybe I wasn't paying attention that much last year to my crime alerts. Don't know, but that's good to hear, and I appreciate the philosophy on the citations versus warnings. I do have a concern on the deputies being knowledgeable on the decimal meter, because I personally wasn't involved with one telling me that they didn't know how to use one. And I don't really want to hear that when, you know, I have residents calling me on the weekends and at night and after hours. It's
I was aware of that. I think we fixed that.
Well, two, and the problem being, I don't know where the communication lacks between the sheriff's office and our code enforcement. I don't know if there's things we can do to help to improve that or what we can do, but I'd like to, you know, see better communication, because I just, that that I got sucked into wasn't even when it came to special magistrate, wasn't even filed as a complaint. So, there was no record of it, so which amazed me on that. So, just like to see that.
Yep, sure.
Appreciate everybody's hard work, and I second the fact, I'd love to see a little bit more presence driving by in the neighborhoods,
Sure.
because I don't see that too much in my neighborhood. So, but thank you.
I drove right by. I'm sitting on the corner at the stoplight, at the stop sign.
My? Only, it's only happened a couple of times. It used to happen all the time.
Commissioner Maldonado?
It's a moneymaker.
So, first and foremost, thank you for your service and for what it is that you do for our incredible city. I will say that I am extremely pleased with the policing efforts. I do understand the warnings. It's a pretty big number. I did go back and look at one year. Thank you for providing that. And I did notice that there was only one warning or official citing for loud noise. And I did bring that up to the commission before, and it's one of the things that I will encourage people to report officially, loud noise complaints, because it makes our job even more difficult. I know the sheriff comes out, they do respond. They give the verbal citations, and they are being fair, as you said, but it's one of the things that we have to work with as a community. The other thing is, thank you for your proactive efforts. So, we did have one intersection over in Passagero that we're very concerned with. I spoke with some of the sheriff deputies that were out there, and they passed it along, and they've been incredible, just really being proactive with that and making sure that our citizens are safe. So, thank you very much for that, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Sheriff, I think your analogy was quite appropriate, because we have these spurts of huge need, you know, whether it's, you know, 4th of July weekend, whether it's the two weeks in spring break. And so, to be able to ramp up staffing without having to increase staffing, and I'm not really sure you charge us for all of that every single time. And so, I just want to say, we do see that, and we do certainly appreciate it very much, because I know this is not a money-making endeavor for you. In fact, you might even be losing a little of the money on us, so all your efforts are very, very much appreciated.
Yep, and you're welcome. I'm glad to do it. No, you, and you don't. I mean, it's all, there's a lot of things that you get that you don't necessarily pay for in the contract, and that's just part of the services that we provide. You know, and the increases, when we do have contract increases, it's because our costs are up, and all we're doing is passing along the exact costs that there are. And you do get credit, because you do pay countywide taxes, and so, you do get credit for those taxes that you're already paying as well. So, I think this year in the contract, as an example, this year in the contract, the deputy rate that you're paying per deputy fully loaded, they're not making this, they like to, but is $132,000. But that's fully loaded. That's with FRS and health insurance and everything else. But the truly loaded cost of that's about 160. So, you're not, you're not paying that, because you're getting credit for what residents of St. Pete Beach are already paying countywide into our budget. So, there is, I appreciate you recognizing that. There is a lot of value to this contracting model.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Marriott?
I just wanted to say that I think that the contract that we have with the sheriff's office is a tremendous deal. You know, I lived here before, when St. Pete Beach had their own police force as well, and the difference in the resources that you guys bring to the city is pretty tremendous. And I have to apologize, I think my district has had all the deputies, because I see them all the time, so. And we think it's great, so.
Where are you?
District One, so 75th North. And it is a tremendous response anytime it's needed, and I know everybody really appreciates it, so thank you.
Good, good. Glad to hear it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have any general audience comments or on this?
There are no audience comments.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
I make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office inter-local agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement services from October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026, in the amount of $3,506,472.
Second?
City Clerk, if you please do a roll call.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Mayor Petrilla?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Do we have any general audience comments?
There are no general audience comments.
Thank you. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any comments on the consent agenda?
I just have one comment, just because I want to, I sent it pretty late to the city manager, but just, do you want me to go ahead and say it first, or, okay? For C, for the Morelli Landscaping, just because when I started going in the detail of the contract, I mean, I know you could work this out with the Morelli Landscaping Company, is the listing of all the species of plants that they had, I know you all probably saw this long list, I think it was 153 different plants, but I'll give you an example of one, the fountain grass, and I heard someone down here pulled some grass. But I've been out there to the dunes, and fountain grass is an invasive species, and it would be kind of contradictory to be approving a contract with one of the ones that we're filling the most bins with for the dune savers out there at the beach. So, just for, and I don't know how to, I think, when you read the contract, it says, "Before you choose," I think, the landscaping, and I'm looking over to Camden, because I'm not quite sure who who heads the thing, but to make sure that maybe working, A, we have an ordinance, and I shared that to the city manager, that has specific species, because we want to increase native species in the city. And then, I know dune savers, when I was on Beach Shore Ship, we had conversations about this, increasing the percentage of native to non-native plants. And it doesn't state it, obviously, in the contract, but as a city, we should be pushing what we're asking for others to do. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was set. And we work it out however we need to.
What's the species name again? What number?
One particular one is fountain grass, but there's 153 that I really didn't have a lot of time to look at every species name to figure out which ones were invasive. And I think it would just be nice to work with, I know dune savers did this before, I think it was in 2012, sometime around there, and they came up with the list, and maybe someone in Rex has this list, but.
Yeah, for the record, I was a board member with Camden, and also the Public Services Director, and he has committed to share that plant list with dune savers.
First, and then also, we won't specify any invasive species on city projects.
Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
City Clerk, if you please do a roll call.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrilla?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, next, we have action item four B, Resolution 2025-22, authorizing the city manager to execute the North Beach Historic Survey Grant Agreement.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of St. Pete Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute the North Beach Historic Survey Grant Agreement, including any amendments with the State of Florida, Department of State, Division of Historical Resources, and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Laura Canary, Community Development Director. This is the next lineup of grant funding for our historic surveys, so we're very excited to get this underway. We've been in talking with the team, and Lynn Rosetti, our plan is, once this survey is completed, to kind of come back and give an update, kind of all-inclusive, kind of looking at what we've done so far, and then kind of connecting the dots, because there's some other efforts going on concurrently. Elevate Florida has actually initiated some historical surveys as well, and so, kind of just to bring it all back to you all and show what's been surveyed, where some gaps are, and then what it all means as it pertains to redevelopment moving forward. But what you have before you tonight is basically accepting the grant funds.
Not a bad thing.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Are there any audience comments?
There are no audience comments.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2025-22, authorizing the city manager to execute the North Beach Historic Survey Grant Agreement.
A second?
City Clerk, if you please do a roll call.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrilla?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have action item four C, final reading of Resolution 2025-19.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of St. Pete Beach, Florida, making findings expanding the Quarry Landing Green Reuse Area by including property located at 75 Quarry Avenue and 85 Quarry Circle, St. Pete Beach, Florida, as identified by parcel ID numbers 36-31-15, and parcel ID number 36-31-15-13590-000-0010, pursuant to Section 376.80, Parent 2, Parent C, Florida.
pursuant to Section 376.80, Parent 2, Parent C, Florida statutes, for the purpose of rehabilitation, job creation, and promoting economic redevelopment, authorizing the City of St. Pete Beach to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of said designation, providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Laura Canary, Community Development Director. We do have Brett Brenneman with us this evening. He's the KT Quarry Avenue Owners Representative, so he's happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This is the second reading for this resolution. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? City clerk, do we have any audience comments?
There are no audience comments.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the final reading of Resolution 2025-19, expanding the Quarry Landing Green Reuse Brownfield area.
Thank you.
My second.
City clerk, if you please, do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Marriott?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Riznicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Maldonado?
Yes.
And Mayor Petrilla?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have items for discussion. Commissioner Robinson, you had two items.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, because this is the only format that we can talk about everything, so, wanted to bring this up in regards to conditional use permit administration. I know that there's been conversations, or we have brought up, Commissioner Riznicki brought up, you know, about review processes, or are there some, brought up the list of CUPs that we currently have. I just wanted to discuss this a little bit more in regards to, there's time and effort that's spent on our staff in both reviewing, and as well, there is also the administration aspect for enforcement. We do have the option, of course, when we have a CUP, to come before us to negotiate on behalf of the residents and behalf of the city to allow or ask for things in return, because obviously, most of these CUPs are for profit. They're not-for-profit. With that being said, I wanted to put out there, are there another tool other than negotiating that we can put out there? I don't know if, from a fee study standpoint, if any of the CUP items were added into, the permit itself was added into the fee study. City Manager?
You mean the application for the conditional use permit?
Application for that, yes. Currently, do we charge anything for an applicant for a CUP?
I see Assistant City Manager coming forward, or Community Development Director, I don't know if either one of you know the answer to that.
I don't know if we currently charge. What I can say is, if we do currently charge, and it's included in the fee study, so we basically submitted our schedule of fees, so anything that we currently charge, they would evaluate, and then anything that other communities are charging, they're going to evaluate if we should be charging, if that makes sense. But I don't know the answer to the question, if we currently charge. I don't know if Laura knows the answer to that. If not, we can get you that answer, but.
Yeah, I would like to know that.
I think it's $500. Yeah.
Okay, just being that, that amount, and that goes for the administration as well as, I mean, we're looking at items such as, you know, keeping code enforcement on staff after hours, things to that effect, that totally benefit a applicant, and where the residents are paying for that. And if we're hiring more to the code enforcement, if we're paying overtime, if we're doing any of that, it's just something I wanted to talk about, to get everybody's input, what they thought on that in regards to it being just another tool. And I'm glad to see, I'm hoping it is part of the study.
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner. So, if we do charge, and they would look at it, they'd benchmark it on other communities to see if we're in line with other communities. Having said that, when we bring the entire fee schedule to you all, you all can make changes as you deem appropriate as well, before we approve the new fee study. So, plenty of opportunities.
Thank you, sir.
I think I do remember seeing something about 500, but I don't, I mean, we don't have to talk about fees, but to review the fees, definitely, because there should be differences between someone getting conditional use for closure of streets or something, you know, versus a larger conditional use application that takes more time and processing and so forth. But just to be fair, because I'm not, and maybe you can give us a status, because I know we did bring this up about the amount of CUPs, once they're approved, and even when a new, when one comes back to us, like, the second time around, like, the review, how did it go last year? Did we have any issues? You know, like, how do we measure it versus just like, oh yeah, we did disclosure, but we just approve it without really knowing the evaluation of that CUP, or, you know, we, obviously, we've had issues with some CUPs, and at what point does it come back to the commission? Like, what's that breaking point, when it returns to us that, hey, we got to revisit this one again, because they're not meeting what the commission at that time approved? But I remember from that time when we were looking at, you know, that, I said, I hope you all got the email right of that big packet, that you were gonna, the city manager was going to look into this with the team and try to figure this all out. Like, how are we going to manage all of this, because there's so much involved, and they're all so different? And how we can get even a report about the status of where they are, because it's a big list, you know, and some that haven't been revisited, some that may have expired for all we know, and we're not sure, and maybe should have come back to us. So, all that find, they're all so different, and they all had so many different conditional uses, you know, given by the commission, and whether they need to revisit it. So, I mean, I don't know what to say, other than I don't, we haven't received a status, right, like, where we are in that process, and there's so much on our plate, but I'm not trying to add something.
Yeah, it has been assigned to the Community Development Director, as well as the Assistant City Manager, to look at one. You do have the list, dozens and dozens of CUPs that have been approved over several years. So, they are looking at a process to not only track, because sometimes they just expire, sometimes they have long lives of implementation involved. And they're also looking at the enforcement piece. We just had a particular case we've been working on, and in the case where there are violations, we have been provided guidance by the city attorney that we follow our normal code enforcement processes, we go through the special magistrate process, and then once there is a finding, we bring it back to the commission to consider whether you keep that CUP in place. You do have the ability to remove it. So, those are all parts of the process we're putting in place. Given staff's workload, they have been prioritizing recovery, but I will, at least next meeting, be able, I'll give you a timeline of when, maybe they can come back and give a presentation of what does this look like from start to finish, and all the way to possible code enforcement and removal of a CUP condition.
And I think we had said too, like, how, as a commission, we could support, you know, I don't know if you're coming up with the fees as a way to help in the administration of it, right, because it's a lot of work. So, are we collecting enough in that maybe we need another FTE, right, for someone focused on just all these CUPs, because there's so much? Or to get a handle of, or is it a half a FTE, or whatever you need to manage it? Because we're constant, I mean, you know, it's on our agendas often, we get a CUP, and then we're going to approve it, and then the whole management of it. So, you know, maybe we should consider that when we do get that fee, if that's.
That's what I'm talking, yeah, and in regards to the fee being of to support the administration of that CUP, instead of it being, you know, again, falling onto the residents to play the premium of that.
Laura Canary, Community Development Director, you bring up a very good point, and we, in the meeting that we had a week or so ago with the fee study consultants, you know, one of the things that we've been looking extensively at is, you know, not just the initial fee, but what does that look like if there's a second review, a third review? As you can imagine, some are so much more complicated and take, you know, weeks or months of staff time versus a quick one. And when we look at the fee structure, it doesn't really differentiate between those. But one thing that we didn't get into is that second component of the administration after the fact. And as we've been talking about, whether it's a cost recovery or pass-through, you know, onto the applicant, however that looks, I think that's something very important to keep in mind, that it doesn't just stop at the point of now they have the CUP. That administrative cost after the fact is something that we need to be factoring in as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you had a second idea?
I had a second, another one I had received, and I'm sure you all did, a couple, a few, should I say, emails regarding SB 180. But I wanted to bring that up, but I wanted to more so talk about, I believe, the city manager was going to also bring up our situation with our chloride levels. So, I'll let her talk about that first, and then I will go into the other aspect of that.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you pull up that the chart I sent? Is that possible? I hope I sent it to you, hang on. Oh, you don't, okay.
Can we send it to Ryan?
Well, I can put it on the overhead if you want me, I'll take it down there.
So, in front of you, you have a chart that was provided to us by the City of St. Petersburg. And for the public's information, in case, just for the record, our, the City of St. Pete Beach is responsible for the collection system of the sewer, so that's the pipes, the pumps, and the large distribution pipe that goes underwater to the treatment plant. And on August 28th, staff met with the City of St. Petersburg City Administrator Robert Erdis and Public Works Administrator Claude Tankersley to discuss the elevated chloride levels entering St. Petersburg Northwest Water Reclamation Facility from St. Pete Beach's wastewater collection system. And as you can see on this chart, the chloride levels started to trend upwards in 2018. And by 2021, we were exceeding the chloride levels that we are allowed contractually from St. Pete Treatment System. So, the dotted line is the level that we're allowed to send over their way. And then, the solid red line are the actual levels right now of the chloride that is being sent over. So, these elevated chloride levels reduce St. Petersburg's ability to produce reclaimed water for their customers. They believe the likely cause of the elevated chloride is saltwater intrusion through inflow and infiltration, otherwise known as INI. A prior study completed in 2016 found that much of the city's collection system, pipes and manholes were compromised and in need of repair. So, we're almost in 2026 now. We, 10 years later, we are in the process of doing a complete review of our sewer system, so that involves using cameras to go through each of the lateral lines to see where those compromises are. Exactly. So, in response, the city has developed a pretty aggressive wastewater capital improvement plan that you just approved to try to begin to address INI. It's not fully funded. We've also established bi-weekly coordination meetings with the City of St. Petersburg's counterparts, so their engineering teams to work with us together to monitor system conditions, share data, and come to an agreement on a timely approach to how we could solve this problem. We remain committed to making the necessary investments to the wastewater system, and we are also committed to keeping a positive regional partnership with St. Petersburg. In preparation to give you a comprehensive overview of this problem and the solve for it, Camden Mills, the Public Service Director, will provide a very comprehensive presentation at our next meeting in September. This was just to give you a frame of the problem and to see how these chloride levels have essentially quadrupled in the last several years. So, with that, we will be bringing forward more information and hopefully, and some solutions, so.
In anticipation of that presentation, would you mind jotting down a couple of questions to be answered at that meeting?
Yes.
I've been here two and a half years, some of you've been here two years almost, some of you a month, some of you a year. And this is the first I've seen of this report, unless you guys have seen it before. I certainly haven't. And so, I'm, and I know Camden is new in his position as well. I'm assuming that the City of St. Petersburg has been bringing this to our attention every year, if not more frequently. So, I would like to know, you know, when did we find out about this? When did they tell us about it? I'm shocked at the height of the levels that no one said anything about it, but up until this point, again, understanding that city manager and new public works director are brand-new in their positions, are relatively new. So, I think that would be good information to have, you know, again, why were we not made aware of this sooner? So, we can take proactive steps much, much sooner, because now we're at a very, very high level. So, I appreciate that the City of St. Petersburg is willing to work with us on this. And I appreciate the fact that the staff has already laid out an action plan, including putting into our budgets, so that we can make sure we address these issues going forward. And the reason for looking backwards is to make sure that we don't have the same problem in the future again.
I would add to that, I would add to, how long is the fix? How long is this fix going to take? Because we're talking about anywhere from cracked pipes to broken pipes all across the city. We're talking about them at homeowners, everybody who's been here a long time and lived in Florida knows of Orangeburg. And we're talking about the stress that the recent storms put on everything. You have anything that's collapsed underneath, it's going to put pressure on a pipe. If it doesn't have any support, then it's going to break. We've got an old system, it's nothing new to anybody who's been here a long time, but this is critical. And it's not going to be, it's another thing that's not going to be cheap. And I just want every resident to know that, this is not going to be cheap either. We've got a lot of things on our plate that are not cheap. Which brings me, because of this information, and because I think everybody from a resident standpoint realizes that there's a lot of clogged storm drains. I see flooding, C-Click fixes all the time. So, we're still working on that, I know, and we're behind on that project as well. So, with those two, with both the sewer, in light of the sewer with the INI problem, and in light of our stormwater situation, and in light of SB 180, I'm just bringing up this for a topic of conversation in regards to what other cities are doing, such as edge water and manatee. Because right now, as we read SB 180, our hands are tied as a city to do anything, to do anything to try to help finance this outside and asking for greater impact fees, asking for more from any sort of development. And that begs the question, are we ready for development in this city when we look at our sewer and we look at our stormwater? There are some cities that are, you know, signing up, joining the lawsuit, you know, against, to appeal SB 180. But there's also cities that are turning around and saying, and I don't know what the legal plan is for them, but they're turning around and they're ignoring SB 180, and they're going ahead and doing moratoriums. And because, as we can see here, we have a lot of infrastructure failure and a lot of infrastructure problem. And it questions whether, not capacity, it's questioning whether we can just even run additional density through our city, through our sewers.
I think it does one more thing, which is, to me, it calls into question every CUP we've approved for development in the last two, three years, because this problem that was identified on that number from St. Petersburg, so if our public works director and if our city staff had that information, if the developers had this information, how do we get reports that say everything is 100% hunky-dory? You have all, we kept hearing this over and over again, you have all the capacity you could ever handle. And by the looks of that. And by the, by the looks of that, it, it's almost like half of our water is saltwater, which means our sewer systems are not doing what they're supposed to be. They're compromised.
And what is the, um, what is the, uh, if we don't get this fixed in time for St. Petersburg, hopefully they continue to wanna, you know, to work with us. I mean, the, the other option for them is to do what with us? To drop us? Would they drop us? I mean, and then where else would we go?
So my understanding is that they can't just shut the pipe off.
Good.
That would be an environmental disaster. They can hold us to our contract provisions. So if we are not meeting our contract provisions and they're causing them some harm, for example, loss of revenue, they could take a legal action on a breach of contract. They're not, they're being very good partners right now. And we're seeking to also be good partners to try to get a remedy that they agree with on timing and, um, appropriate investment.
And adding to the list of questions would be, who does the level readings? Is that a responsibility to St. Pete, to us? Okay, so they?
I'm assuming they have measurements at the exact inflow area and they run tests regularly, probably daily.
I just, just wanna see how we can get ahead of things and, and, and be proactive instead of, unfortunately, it seems like a lot of what we have to deal with is all reactive these days. But I, I will bring up the dreaded M-word again, uh, moratorium. Whether this actually, I mean, calls for a moratorium on, on what we're doing here on this beach.
Do we have the ability? And, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll learn more about it when Camden gives us his presentation, but, but one of the things that I'd also like to know is if we have the ability to monitor those chloride levels ourselves? You know, like if we have an ability to monitor those at the pump stations so that we can, so that we can, you know, further track down, use that information to further track down if there's a specific part of the island that has more problems than others? You know, is it, is it, is it little bits of infiltration in every single pipe on the beach or is it, you know, one major spot that's broken apart? You know, I think, I think that, that sort of information is, um, is gonna be what we need to be able to have a further conversation about how big of a problem it is, right?
Well, the TV project, which is happening in the next three to four months, we're gonna do the entire system, that will uncover every single breach in the system. As far as testing, I'd need Camden to tell me whether we'd have the ability to test it at each pump station. Because if we only did it at the main pump station, that's the same exact water that's leaving the island.
Right.
So that wouldn't give us any information. But, um, yes, he's saying we could actually test at each pump station, or lift station. We have 20 plus lift stations.
I imagine it's a chemical kit, so it can't be that expensive to test or something, right? Like our pool? Something similar. Okay. So just, I wanted to bring that up because I think in all transparency, the residents and everybody living out here needs to know this, that this is another critical item that has to get addressed. And it deserves a lot of thought onto, to.
Well, I think this is important information to know because any of the projects that have been approved in the past, they still have to go through a concurrency evaluation that would require that the sewer system be adequate at the time of their building permit issuance, at which point if they wanna continue with the project, they would have to be willing to pay to whatever it takes to make the system handle what they're adding to it, correct? So, um, so I think we have some built-in safeguards there.
Next item for discussion, it is Commissioner Marriott with setbacks.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring this up because I know at the last Board of Adjustment meeting, there were a couple of cases before the Board of Adjustment where people were asking for variances for stairs in the setback. And, um, and so I think that, uh, this might be something that we wanna look at before the Board of Adjustment gets flooded with six, six of these a month, as more people are elevating their houses and building new houses. And I think that the Board of Adjustment is, is, um, I'm sure, as they have been instructed by the City Attorney and, and as is correct, that particularly when somebody is building new construction, um, you should be building to the codes and that, um, you know, unless there's some, I, I know you've explained it before about, you know, if the, if the setbacks are such that they're overlapping each other and you literally can't put a building on the lot, then that's a case for a variance, but, but otherwise, it's very difficult to justify a variance for new construction. But the setbacks that we have, um, on all of our lots were mostly, uh, you know, arrived at when people were building houses on the ground and, and weren't putting staircases to them. And so in the interest of, of, uh, people being able to have kind of thoughtfully designed houses with a very welcoming front porch with stairs going up to the front porch, which I think is something that, uh, most people would, uh, my, my, my impression is that a lot of people think that that's a nice way to have a neighborhood where, where the fronts of the houses look very welcoming versus looking like a fortress where you have to get through a gate and go to the back before you can find the stairs. It might be something that we need to look at. And so I didn't know if the rest of the commission felt like that was a worthwhile thing to look at as people are, you know, I think we're up to, what, 200 demo permits in the city so far or something like that, you know, and we're about to have several hundred new houses built. You know, should, should we be looking at, at what, what, what are the options that we're gonna give people for stairs?
I would most definitely agree. I think that, you know, we've been, we allowed that for, um, non-conforming, if you're raising your house, and we gave, we were gracious on that. I think we should offer that, uh, as well, um, within reason. Again, within reason being a new construction, you can, but again, I think it's gotta follow some of the, the normal variance rules. I mean, an odd-shaped piece of property, um, you know, you're not building everything else out. We're talking strictly from a stairwell standpoint. And if it's not over, I think we need to look at it from at least a stairwell standpoint. Again, we weren't talking about raising everything out here before and now we're looking at, and we're looking at people that are really trying to do the right thing, support the community, stay in the community, be a good neighbor. I, I think we need to, to maybe be a little, at least look at the codes, see what, see what we can make adjustment-wise if we need to.
Yeah, or, or, you know, I, I know that personally, I would be very interested in, in hearing what our planning team thinks about, you know, what, what, what are some reasonable ways to, to alter the code perhaps for, for staircases in the setbacks, whether you change the setback just for stairs but not for a building or, you know, allow some percentage of a staircase to extend into the, into the setback or whether you take into account how big the, the right-of-way is on any given piece of property. You know, I know in my neighborhood, the, the, kind of the first 15 feet of most people's front yard is city right-of-way and then you have a 20-foot setback. So, you know, the stairs are a long ways away from the street. And, and if there's any, if there's any creative ways to, to kind of fix that problem with, without just, you know, wholesale going, oh, you know, do whatever you want. Or, or, or putting the Board of Adjustment in a position of having to go well outside the bounds of what, what they should be allowing.
I, I would say it depends, when you, when you were saying, if it's a new build, you know, and I'll give myself as a personal example because I remodeled my home before the storm, um, and I had an issue with the staircase because of the limited in, in the setback and where it can be placed and the right-of-way and all. So we had to get very creative without having to go to the Board of Adjustment. I could have opted to go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance, but, um, you know, the architect and the designer, they, they got creative and we figured it out to be able to get that staircase in the front corner, not in the middle, you know, of the home. Because it was not a new build, it was a remodel. So maybe it's setting, like you said, if you're rebuilding completely, then, um, I would say it would be different then versus someone who's trying to add more or squish, you know. I've heard some of the Board of Adjustment meetings and I could hear the frustration in a couple of the, of the people serving on the board as, you know, I wish you would have just designed it because it's a new build. Why, why do we have to give you a variance if this is a complete new bill and just build to the code? So there was a couple of cases not too long ago that I heard that they said something like that. So I do agree, we gotta look at the land development code, but we have to be careful as to, you know, what are we, looking at what that neighborhood would look like because then you would have staircases right up to the right-of-way, you know, or right into someone's, because the case for me was I couldn't go into my neighbor's setback or too close, you know, they, they don't want that staircase right next to their home. And there's other things in the land development code that I think needs to be looked at, especially with the opportunities that we have, um, the, the fill. And I know I've meant, asked this, um, and a couple of people in some of our meetings, um, in the neighborhood who are rebuilding in the lower-lying areas of our city and can't fill, and I don't know the exact number, above the crown of the center of the building, you can't add more soil, but they wish they could. We're flooding and now we have an opportunity, you're rebuilding brand-new and you could fill the home. And we're, we're missing those opportunities, especially in some of the lower-lying areas of, of our city. So I do believe we need to look at the codes, um, but I think, and I hope that the, the staff have been, um, I know they've heard these comments from some of the neighborhood meetings that we've had when people have asked, well, why can't we change it? And it's true, why can't we change it? We should, but we shouldn't go too slow because all these permits are coming in now.
Yeah. Well, and I think part of the, part of the issue with the setbacks and with stairs is that you go, well, if you're, if you're designing from scratch, you can, you can meet the setbacks and, and you can, absolutely. But I think it's what are, what are the setbacks incentivizing people to do, right? And so if you, if you want to rebuild a house that's more or less the same size house you had before, you can't also fit stairs in, you know? So if you, if you had a 1,300-square-foot house and you wanna put a 1,300-square-foot house back on there, you go, well, I can only do that if I don't have stairs. So now I'm gonna have to have a 1,100-square-foot house. Or I have to go two stories. But then we also have a lot of people who are like, man, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna live in a place where there's these, you know, three-story, you know, huge houses towering over, you know, the little house next door. And so I think having a little bit of flexibility, particularly on the stairs in the setback, might encourage, help encourage people who just wanna put back a modest, single-story house that's elevated to do just that without feeling like, well, if I have to design to these setbacks that aren't very workable for the size of house that I'm trying to build, which is the same as what was there, I either have to go two stories or I have to build a much smaller house. And so, so that's where, that's where I think the, the issue with the stairs starts to become a little trickier.
I mean, I guess I would ask the city, like, what, what's the process? Like, I mean, we want this to move faster, obviously, people have permits and people are asking, but I know it's work, right? It's a lot of work and, and how do we go about it? Like, I don't know the comments that the permitting office is receiving, you know, what people are requesting and then what we need to do as a commission to help the residents move this along for them.
So the process we're trying to follow for ordinance changes is that we bring you a presentation first so that you can give us feedback on what you really would like to see in the ordinance change. And then we would bring back a first reading that would attempt to capture that. As far as timing, I just would wanna hear maybe a sense of urgency from you so that I could talk to the staff and see how we reprioritize what's on their plate and possibly, I mean, we have a lot in the queue right now on ordinances, so it just depends on what your sense of urgency is.
Or is it a, is it a Board of Adjustment? Except for the landfill, I, I mean, I don't know if that's a Board of, you know, being able to do something like that through Board of Adjustment, but like the setbacks or staircase?
Back from Planning Board if you wanted to.
Planning Advisory Board and then to this council. You'd be amending the code, even if you're to amend variance criteria, that still comes here, but probably you're looking at some limited reasonable exemption for stairs in the front setback, which Brandon and staff could draft up, but some diagrams and then you could choose. And then we would draft into an ordinance format, then that would be adopted into the land development code. And then if you complied with the code, then you wouldn't need a variance for it to go to the Board of Adjustment.
So should it be something that, I mean, you brought up a good point, the Planning Board, like to have, if this is a task that they could advise, if within a timeframe, I know you said, I don't know, you said for, how many, um, demolishing permits?
I mean, there's a bunch, there's, yeah.
We have over 100, we're projecting over 200.
Yeah, I think it's urgent. Six times already.
Yeah, I think it's, it's.
It is a repeat.
Put it to the front.
So is this something that the staff could come back with a presentation in the next 30, 60 days? What's a reasonable?
Laura's shaking her head, yes.
Which one of those?
30 or 60.
And we can track right to you or?
Yeah.
If you add the Planning Board, that adds another layer.
Because of the urgency.
The initial presentation early October would be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we can also, at least, um, at the next Planning Board meeting, at least start to give them a heads up and start that discussion with them that it's gonna be coming before them. But yeah, I think the urgency is there for sure.
If there's a way to, because I knew this was also for non-conforming, because we had the non-conforming and non-conforming still had to go get a variance anyway.
Right.
Don't forget that. So, you know, when you're Board of Adjustment, you gotta, is this a non-conforming elevating or is this, you know, so something that might help with both and make it a lot easier for everybody.
Is this something that would be, is an option for a temporary, like we did with ACs and some of the other things, so that it's specifically to?
You know, emergency ordinance, is your saying?
That might be nice.
Not necessarily an emergency ordinance, but specifically to hurricane-impacted homes, for example, rather than building new on a vacant lot.
That's something that we would bring back.
Because we're, we're looking at an incentive for somebody to rebuild a hurricane-impacted home that's, that experienced substantial damage, right? Not just come down and tear down all of our homes.
We could bring in emergency ordinance in October. We'll, we would do our best to capture what you said today and then.
We could salute it, we could salute the presentation, we can salute the presentation so that we can get input and then first and second reading.
Yeah.
I think that's a good.
Okay.
Good compromise.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have reports. City Clerk?
I have nothing to report this evening.
City Manager?
I have two additional reports. Just wanted to let everyone know that we have no, uh, change in status on the Publix project. They still are reviewing, uh, their options and they have said they're hoping that in the next month or so, they would have an update and keep us posted on the progress. Also, uh, announcement again on the Upham Beach portion of the Emergency Beach Renourishment Project. It is still scheduled to begin on September 15th with the construction expected to last approximately one month. They will be placing about 66,000 cubic yards of sand along 1,900 feet of shoreline. Please note that dune construction is not included in this effort. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Um, just one thing. If you remember, we adopted a nuisance abatement ordinance a few months ago. We had a first successful instance, the house in Mangrove, um, has been cleaned up at 19173rd Avenue. I'll put a picture up. We wanna thank the, uh, property owners and tenants there as well. We were just about to go in that day on a Monday and with our nuisance contractors and clean the site. And when we arrived on Monday morning, uh, the site was clean and they were in compliance. So it's a success story, uh, that we have from that, um, nuisance abatement code revision. So we're ready to, um, proceed with other properties. This is the, one of the first ones that have come through.
I'd, I'd like to thank the Vos Law Firm for coming up with the, the nuisance ordinance and being able to push that forward. being able to push that forward, because without that, we were stagnant, nothing was happening. So without you guys kind of stepping in and pushing that and showing us the way, thank you, it was, it's a, it's a much prettier.
Fun thing to draft, too, and then see it implementing was even more gratifying, so.
Thank you, sir. District Four.
I briefly mentioned at the last commission meeting that property values were going down, others were going up, and things like that. I was able to find a point of contact at the Pinellas County Appraisers Office, I've passed that person on to Ms. Devon Schmidt, our Finance Director, so that hopefully we can get a workshop, or at least a community advisory, to just get people better informed on what it is that the county is doing with those properties. That's all I've got.
Thank you. District Three.
Just some community meetings, Bel Vista, October 9th at 7:00 PM at the Triangle Park, and then the Don Cesar Property Owners Corporation wanted to invite, I mean, it's the city, it's their celebration, but citywide invite, 100th anniversary, November 2nd at the Don Cesar Hotel, if you go to their website, dcpc.org, you would see that invite there, so anybody's welcome.
Thank you. District Two.
Just that I do have another community meeting, or not community meeting, but my library hours, which will be this month and two weeks, so that will be on the following Tuesday, so I'm losing track of my weeks here, so that is on the 16th, over at the library, 5:00 to 5:45.
Thank you. District One.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. For those of you anxiously awaiting cooler weather, and the fall concert series is starting up again, so started looking for that over here at Horan Park with live music, and our firefighters are out there all the time, burgers and hot dogs and other vendors, so make sure to check that out. And also, I will be attending the next commission meeting remotely. It is my annual wedding anniversary, so we'll be out of town for that. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.